The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem. Please remain standing for the invocation to be delivered by the Honorable Vincent Bingbong Crisologo from the First District of Quezon City.
Almighty Father, as we resume our session, we again pray for your continuing blessings upon each and every one of us, that we may be able to discern your will in our work in Congress, that will benefit your children, especially the least of your brethren. Father God, continue to pour upon us your guidance, your wisdom, and your patience, so that everything we do here will be for your greater glory and for the good of our country. We pray that you bless our President, President Rodrigo Duterte, our Speaker, Speaker Pantalon Alvarez, our Majority Leader, Representative Rudy Orinias, and all the members of the House of Representatives, so that we can be one in working for a better Philippines. We thank you, our Lord, for blessing us and using us as your instrument in improving the lives of our people. All this, Father, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives: Abaya, Abayon, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg, Ascharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adiyong, Advinkula, Agarow, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Amentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barzaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Alex Torubiano, Caminero, Campos, Tanama, Hari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fred, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Sariles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kawanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Fortuna, Casalan, Crisologo Kuwa, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venecia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, De Maporo Abdullah, De Maporo Mohammed, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Rigel, Hermita Buahain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Josebio, Evardoni, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferret Juliet, Ferret Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Go Ana Cristina, Go Marc, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dom, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Fereradi, Hopper, Halosjos, Javier, Ho, Honghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laogan, Lazatin, Liachon, Lee, Limkaychong, Lebrigat, Lopez Benhar, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Mahapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodada Toshuharto, Mangodado Toshahid, Marco Leta, Marcos, Mariño, Maques, Martinez, Matugas, Meliana, Mendín, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malañaon, O Waminal, O Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Paqueau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Anotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relámpagos, Rebilia, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Máximo, Román, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sandoval, Sangkopan, Santos Rehto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Meri, Sabilianno, Semah, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez, Sielbarado, Tambunting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianco, Ting, Tinio, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umalí, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Caterra, Veloso, Vergara, Villia Fuerte, Villianueva, Villiaraja Suárez, Villiarica, Villiarín, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melicio, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Zarate Subiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 181 members responded to the call.
With 181 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that for the approval of Journal Number 78 dated March 21, 2018. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Journal of March 21, 2018 is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as communications and committee.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the reference of business.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading, House Bill 7443, Establishing the Kalinga Sports Training Center, Representative Mangawang.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 7444: Providing for the development of a national defense industry to the strengthening and revitalizing of the self-reliant defense posture, Representative Espino.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill Number 7447 to 7448: Establishing national highways in various barangays in the province of Dabao-Rental, Representative Almario.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7449: Approving the sum of as supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2018, Representatives Alvarez, Fariñas, and Nograles.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 7450: Granting survivorship benefits of the surviving legitimate spouse of a deceased chairperson, commissioner, or labor arbiter, Representatives Nograles.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 7451: Repeating the discretion of the Secretary of Health to determine other types of basic list of vaccine and augment the list of vaccine-perventable diseases, Representative Bagachin.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7452: Strengthening the Comelec, Representative Bagachin.
To the Committee on Soft Bridge and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 7453: Merging barangays 82, 83, 84, and 85 with the city of Caloocan, Representative Malapitan.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7454: Creating the Bacolod Negro's Heart and Kidney Center, Representative Gasataya.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 7456: Establishing a national high school in barangay Población Pitogo-Sambuanga del Sur, Representative Sariles.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7457: Ordining the promotion of social enterprises, Representatives Unavia, Mendoza, Limkaychong, and Belaro.
To the Committee on Small Business and Entrepreneurship Development and the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 7458: Amending, adding various sections under Chapters 1 to 6 of the National Internal Revenue Code, Representatives Kuwa, Abu, and Gonzalez, Aurelio Dom.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 7459: Providing for environmental informant incentive system, Representative Manalo.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7460: Establishing a free basic medicine assistance program, Representatives Nieto, Maceda, Martinez, Sandoval, and Malapitan.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill Number 7461 and 7475: Extending renewing for another 25 years the franchise credit to Iglesia de Cristo, Representatives Nieto, Maceda, Martinez, Sandoval, Malapitan, Swansing.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 7462: Institutionalizing sports varsity teams, Representatives Nieto, Maceda, Martinez, Sandoval, and Malapitan.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7463: Prescribing every third Sunday of November as the Philippine Day of Remembrance for Road Crash Victims, Representatives Nieto, Maceda, Martinez, Sandoval, and Malapitan.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 7464: Renaming the junction Talubin-Barlig-Natonin-Parasellis-Kalakad Road in Mountain Province, Representatives Casalan, Mangawang, Bagilat, Bulut Bektang, Go Marc, and Vernos.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 7466: Affirming English as an official language of our country, Representative Belaro.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture and the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7467: Declaring the province of Rizal a tourism development area, Representative Rowapuno.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Bill 7468: Prohibiting the exploration of coal and installation of any coal power plant in the second legislative district of the hall, Representative Amentado.
To the Committee on Energy.
House Bill 7469: Promoting responsible gun ownership, Representative Juarezma.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7470: Protecting the right of athletes to serve the Philippines as part of the national team, Representatives Rowapuna and Cayetano.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 7471: Mandating the use of body camera by law enforcement officers, Representative Velarde.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 7473: Converting the Don Carlos Polytechnic College into a state college that be known as Don Carlos Polytechnic State College, Representative Subiri.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 7474: Creating three new courts in the first district of Sambuaga del Norte, Representative Halosjos.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7476: Granting free parking privilege to all senior citizens and PWD, Representative Ferret Luis.
To the Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 7492: Further amending Section 101A and 1 and Section 169 of PDU 612, Representatives Alvarez and Fariñas.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
House Bill 7493: Establishing a barangay equalization fund, Representatives Salo and Kalalang.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 7494: Granting retirement, survivorship, and other benefits of the branch clerks of court of the regional trial courts and the clerks and assistant clerks of court of the office of the clerk of court of the regional trial courts, Representative Retomora.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 7495: Providing for the automatic annual adjustment of the pensions of retirees from the government who are members of the GSIS, Representative Daton.
To the Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
Resolution 1797: Commending the Philippine Army for being inducted into the Paladion Balance and Scorecard Hall of Fame, Representative Baliano.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Solution 1798: Directing a proper House Committee to inquire in the proliferation of illegal logging activities in Catanduanes, Representative Sarmiento Cesar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1799: Commending for the independent investigation of the light plane crash incident in Plare del Bulacan, Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1800: Strongly urging the DOT and DPWD to immediately explore, promote, and develop other tourist destinations nationwide, Representative Almario.
To the Committee on Tourism.
House Solution 1801: Directing the House Committee on Human Rights to investigate the illegal arrest of the Mabinay 6, Representatives Elago Brosas and several others.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1803: Urging the President to resume and continue the peace negotiations between the government of the Republic of the Philippines and the National Democratic Front, Representatives Sahali, Sarate, Sakdalan, Acosta Alban, several others.
To the Special Committee on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity.
House Solution 1804: Expressing profound condolences on the demise of Honorable Riquito Oblan Jr., former representative of the first district of Ilocos Norte, Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1805: Condemning the recent attacks committed by the suspected members of the NPA in Dabao City, Representative Batawil.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Solution 1806: Directing the Committee on Natural Resources and Ecology to investigate the closure of establishments and businesses in Boracay, Representative Sarate.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1807: Urging the Committee on Human Rights to investigate the prescription of 657 alleged officers and members of CCPNPA, Representatives Sarate and De Jesus.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1808: Directing the Committee on Labor and Employment to inquire on the impact on the workers' constitutional and statutorily guaranteed rights to security of tenures to self-organization in the light of the recent resolution by Supreme Court, Representative Villarin.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1809: Commending the local government officials of Dabao City, headed by Mayor Sara Duterte Carpio for the successful hosting of the Ironman 70.3, Representatives Uy Barreta and Velasco Caterra.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Solution 1810: Directing the Committee on Energy to inquire in the continuing oil price hikes since the start of the year, Representative Uy Barreta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1811: Expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of the late Congressman Felix Nancing Rigoroso Alfillor Jr. of the fifth district of Camarinsu, Representative Fortuno.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1812: Urging the DOT, LGUs, and Philippine Coast Guard to strictly impose rules and regulations on the safety operations of all beach hotels and resorts, Representative Uy Barreta.
To the Committee on Tourism.
Messages from the Senate: Message dated March 19 informing the House that the Senate on even date passed Senate Bill Numbers 1233 and 1738.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 19 informing the House that Senate even date approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 1461 and House Bill 7054.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 20 informing the House and Senate on March 19 designated Senators Lakson, Konasan, Villianueva, Gachalian, and Franklin Delone as conferrices of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the conflicting provisions of Senate Bill Number 1738 and House Bill 6221.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 20 informing the House and Senate even date approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 11533 and House Bill 5792.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 20 informing the House that the Senate on March 12 approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill Number 1662 and House Bill 6573.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 20 informing the House and Senate even date approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 1279 and House Bill 5269.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 21 informing the House and the Senate on March 20 designated Senators Villianueva, Angara, Binay, Bilyar, and Delone as conferrices of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the conflicting provisions of Senate Bill 1317 and House Bill 64.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 21 informing the House and the Senate on March 20 designated Senators Cinche Bilyar, Ralph Precto, Joseph Victor G. Herseth, and Prasis and Pangilinan as conferrices of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the conflicting provisions of Senate Bill 1233 and House Bill 5745.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 21 informing the House that the Senate on March 20 approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 108 and House Bill 6782.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 21 informing the House that the Senate even date approved the Conference Committee report of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 1444 and House Bill 6772.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 21 informing the House and Senate even date adopted House Concurrent Solution Number 16.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 21 informing the House and the Senate Message dated March 21, informing the House that the Senate President on March 20 constituted the following to the Joint Congressional Oversight Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs pursuant to Section 37B of Republic Act Number 8042 as amended by Republic Act Number 10022, Senators Joel Bilianueva, Senator Sani Angara, Senator Mariludes Binay, Senators Cincha Bilyar, and Senators Franklin Delone.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 22, informing the House that the Senate on March 21 designated Senators Ehercito, Ligarda, Rekto, Po, and Fontiveros as conferees of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the disagreeing provisions of Senate Bill 1537 and House Bill 5777.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message dated March 26, informing the House and Senate on March 20 designated Senators Bilyar, Rekto, Escudero, Ehercito, and Pangilinan as conferees of the Bi-Cameral Conference Committee on the conflicting provisions of Senate Bill 1233 and House Bill 5745.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications, undated letter of Salvador C. Miguel Dea, Executive Secretary, Office of the President.
To the Archives.
Letters dated March 21 and 27 and April 4 and 5 of Salvador C. Miguel Dea, Executive Secretary, Office of the President.
To the Archives.
Committee reports, report number 684 and 687 on House Bill Numbers 5745 and 7472.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 685 on House Bill Number 7465.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Report Number 688 to 706, 708 to 711, and 717 on House Bill Number 7477 to 7491, 6290, 6289, 6291, 6292, 7497 to 7500, and 7506.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 707, House Bill Number 7496.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Numbers 712, 713, and House Bill Number 7501 and 7502.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 714 on House Bill Number 7503.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 715 on House Bill Number 7504.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 716 on House Resolution 1818.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 718 to 721 and 724 on House Bill Number 7507 to 7510 and 7521.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 722 on House Bill Number 7512.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 723 on House Bill Number 7513.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 725 on House Bill Number 7522.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 726 on House Bill Number 7525.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 727 and 728 on House Bill Number 7544 and 7545.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 729 to 731, House Bill Number 7548 to 7550.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 732 on House Bill Number 7562.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege.
Move to suspend, Madam Speaker. Move to suspend.
What is the nature of your concern?
I would like to speak on the alster of Chief Justice Severino.
Majority Leader.
Move to suspend for a few minutes.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, upon consultation with the Majority Leader, for now, I withdraw my request to be allowed to speak on a matter of personal and collective privilege with the understanding that I will be given the opportunity in at the proper time.
Noted. Majority Speaker, Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up bills on third reading and I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7163, printed copies of which were distributed to the members in accordance with our rules. And for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7163, enact penalizing the cop throwing hard objects at motor vehicles. Roll call of members consideration, House Bill Number 7163. Abad, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinamagsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte, Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmont Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Viron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meribida, Brosas, Bulut Piktang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixrobianno, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casafranz, Casofedil, Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, Delosamontalia, Dimaporodula, Dimaporokalid, Duabit, Durano, Di Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevia, Iberdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferre, Juliet, Fer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garri Richard, Garri Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Gomark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Sereradi, Hofer, Halosos, Xavier, Ko Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Li Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Cardo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapaglaroyong, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatus Huarto, Mangodadatus Ajid, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nulasko, Nunez Malenyon, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, O'Edwin, O'Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Pimisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sangdval, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Selita, Swansing Rasyo, Suarez, Elbarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungap, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cattera, Velosa, Vergara, Bilyperte, Bilianueva, Biliarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biliarin, Gilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samoramar Kamens, Samoronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With 171 members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7163 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7376. On pursuant to the rules of the House, I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7376, enact further strengthening the office of the Solicitor General by increasing its powers and functions and redefining, expanding, and rationalizing its organization, repealing for the purpose of Public Act Number 9417, Public Act Number 2327, and Executive Orders Number 1, 2, 1, and 2, Series of 1986, repeating funds therefore. Roll call of members consideration, House Bill Number 73676. Abaya, Abayon, Abilianosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ajong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinamagsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmont Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Viron, Bulilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meribida, Brosas.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, my vote is no, and I would like to submit my explanation of vote later.
Yes, noted.
Thank you.
Bulut Piktang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixrobianno, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau.
Madam Speaker, my vote is no, and I would like to assert my right to explain my vote later.
Noted.
Castelo, Casafranz, Casofedil.
Madam Speaker, my vote is no, and I will explain my vote later.
Noted.
Katamco, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, Delosamontalia, Dimaporodula, Dimaporokalid, Duabit, Durano, Di Elago.
Madam Speaker, the vote of Kabataan Portalist is no, and I wish to submit our written explanation.
The vote is noted.
Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevia, Iberdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferre, Juliet, Fer Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendulin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garri Richard, Garri Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Gomark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Sereradi, Hofer, Halosos, Xavier, Ko, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin.
Yo, Madam Speaker, I vote no.
The vote is noted.
Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Li Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Cardo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapaglaroyong, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadatus Huarto, Mangodadatus Ajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nulasko, Nunez Malenyon, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, O'Edwin, O'Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Pimisias Agabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Rowapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangkopan, Sangdval, Santos Rekto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Selita, Swansing Rasyo, Suarez, Elbarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño.
Madam Speaker, I vote no, and would like to explain my vote later.
The vote of the gentleman is noted.
Tolentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungap, Uniko, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velarde, Velasco, Velasco Cattera, Velosa, Vergara, Bilyperte, Bilianueva, Biliarasa, Suarez, Biliarica, Biliarin, Gilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samoramar Kamens, Samoronaldo, Sarate.
Madam Speaker, my vote is no, and I will explain my vote later.
The vote of the gentleman is noted.
Subiri.
With 165 members voting in the affirmative, seven against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7376 is approved on third reading. The Honorable Franz Castro is hereby recognized for his explanation. The gentleman is recognized for his explanation of his vote. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill is an outright historical revisionism. Nagtatago po at isang smokescreen lamang ang pagpapalakas ng office of the Solicitor General. Habang totoo sa mga provision ang panukalang batas na ito, ay absorb ang mga empleyado ng PCGG at 'yung gawain ng PCGG ay magpapatuloy. Pero hindi po ako kumbinsido dahil ang creation of PCGG in the first place, Madam Speaker, is a product of a collective action of the Filipino people to oust a dictator and to recover the ill-gotten wealth of the family of the Marcoses. The PCGG represents not only as a government institution that retrieves or recovers the ill-gotten wealth of the deposed dictator. Kaya po sa tingin ng kaninatawang ito, Madam Speaker, isang malaking kalapastangan ng ating makasesayang papel ng mamamayang Pilipino na buuin at habulin ang ano pang kayang habulin sa yumaong diktador. Kaya, Madam Speaker, ang boto po ng kinatawang ito ay no.
The Honorable Castro is hereby recognized to explain her vote. You are given three minutes.
Marami salamat, Madam Speaker. Ang representanteng ito ay bumoto ng no sa panukalang batas. House Bill 7376 sa mga sumusunod na kadahilanan. Una-una ay ang pagbibigay ng labis-labis na kapangyarihan sa soljen. Pangalawa, 'yung problema po natin na pag nagmerge 'yung mga ahensya na tatlong ahensya na'to ay magkakaroon ng malawakan tangganan sa ating mga kawani. At magdudulot po ito na naman ng kawalanang trabaho, dagdag sa kawalang trabaho. Pangatlo ay 'yung conflict of interest at ang pangapat na gusto ko pong diin na ipagmamaliit sa PCGG, sa trabaho ng PCGG, sa paghahabol ng mga nakaw na yaman ng mga Marcoses. What is, what are the importance of PCGG? Number one, in correcting the wrongs committed against the people by the Marcoses and their cronies. Number two, in fulfilling the constitutional mandate like transparency, accountability of the officers. And number three, in fulfilling the constitutional mandate And number three, in preventing chronic capitalism and dissipation of public wealth, et cetera. Pag sinisigaw po nating never again patungkol 'yun sa lahat ng abuso at kasalanan na diktaduria at isang gobyerno kumilos labas sa interes ng Mamamayan, human rights violation, at siyempre po ang chronic capitalism at ang dissipation of public wealth, et cetera. Alam po natin ang PCG ay, ay ang unang first, kauna-unahang opisyal na act ng gobyerno sa panahon ng Corey Aquino Administration na February 28. Ito po ay nilikha bilang independent body para po habulin ang mga nakaw na yaman. Samantalang sa House Bill 7376, ilalagay na lamang sa limang divisiyon ang PCGG. Kaya po nirereiterate ng representasyong ito ang aking pagboto ng no sa mga sumunod po ng mga kadahilan. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Tiño is recognized for his explanation.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Bumoto po ako ng no sa House Bill 7376 sa susunod na mga kadahilan. Sa batas po na ito, ang layunin ay abolish, among others, abolish ang dalawang opisina ng gobyerno, ang Presidential Commission on Good Government, at tsaka ang Office of the Government Corporate Council. So, unang dahilan natin dito ay bahagi ito ng inanuntiyong prioridad na programa ng Duterte Administration na rightsizing o pagbabawas o pagtatanggal malawakan tanggalan ng mga kawani sa gobyerno, kaya tumututul po tayo rito. Pangalawa, bagaman, bilang prinsipyo ay pinaglalaban at pinanindigan natin ang pagpapaunlad ng mga, ng sweldo at benepisyo ng mga kawani ng gobyerno. Sa panukalang batas po na ito ay bibigyan ng mga natatanging benepisyo ang Solicitor General mismo at ang mga kawani ng Solicitor General. Padron po ito sa Duterte Administration na sa halip na ay taguyod ang kapakanan ng lahat ng kawani ng gobyerno ay may mga partikular na sektor na tila pinapaboran. Halimbawa na dito 'yung sa kaso ng pagdoble ng sweldo ng sundalo at police at iba pang uniform personnel habang napag-iwanan ang sweldo ng mga kawaning civilian. Ngunit, ang pinakamaring dahilan kung bakit po tayo bumuboto ng no ay sa layuning abolition ng Presidential Commission on Good Government. Sa kalagayang, kinikilala mismo ng gobyerno na meron pang mahigit limang bilyong dolyar ng ill-gotten wealth ng mga Marcos na kailangang pambawiin ay papahinahin, papalabnawin, tatanggalan ng ipin ng panukalang batas na ito ang gobyerno sa kanyang napakabigat na tungkulin para bawiin ang ill-gotten wealth, ang nakaw na yaman ng mga Marcos. Kaya, malinaw po na bahagi ang panukalang batas na ito, partikular 'yung abolition ng PCGG sa nakita na nating itinutulak ng Duterte Administration na rehabilitasyon ng pamilya Marcos mula sa pagpapahintulot ni Pangulong Duterte na ilibing sa libinga ng mga bayani ang diktador na si Marcos hanggang sa kanyang pagsuporta sa Vice Presidency ng natalong kandidato na si Bongbong Marcos. Kaya sa mga kadahilan ng ito po ay bumoto tayo ng no.
The Honorable Sarate has three minutes to explain his vote.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Ang kinatawang ito po ng bayan muna, Madam Speaker, ay bumuboto ng no sa House Bill Number 7376 sa mga kadahilan ng nabanggit na rin natin sa plenario ng pinagdebatihan ito. Una, taliwas doon sa pamagat ng batas na ito na it will strengthen the office of the Solicitor General. Sa katunayan, gagawin itong super na makapangyarihan ang Solicitor General's office. Kung sa kasalukuyan, ang opisina ng Solicitor General ay kayang magpatalsik ng isang punong mahistrado sa Cortes Suprema, sa ilalim ng batas na ito ay mas lalong lalakas ang kapangyarihan ng Solicitor General at hindi malayong ang Solicitor General na, Madam Speaker, ang pinakamakapangyarihang, isa sa pinakamakapangyarihang opisyal ng ating bansa kung papayagan natin ang panukalang batas na ito. Dahil napakaraming provision dito na naidagdag sa kapangyarihan ng Solicitor General. Pangalawa, malinaw na ang mayor nalayunin sa panukalang batas na ito, gaya na ng natura ng aking mga kasamahan, ang pag-abolish ng Presidential Commission on Good Government ay pagbabaliwala sa makasaysayang tagumpay ng Mamamayan Pilipino ng pinatalsik nito ang diktador na si Marcos at ang kanyang mga pamilya at crony, at ang paghahabol sa mga nakaw na yaman ng diktador na Marcos. Pero dahil sa panukalang batas na ito na i-abolish, ang PCGG ay bibigyan ito sa kamay ng mga hindi naman makakailang mga tagasunod at ginagawang idolo ang diktador na si Marcos ay talagang mawawalan ng saysay ang makasaysayang tagumpay na ito ng ating Mamamayan Pilipino. Ikatlo, malinaw na ito rin ay magreresulta doon sa pagbabawas ng ating mga kawani sa pamahalaan. Napakalaking problema, Madam Speaker, sa kasalukuyan ang kasiguruan sa hanapbuhay ng ating mga kawani sa pamahalaan. Pero sa panukalang batas na ito, sa halip na bigyan ng kasiguruan ang trabaho ng ating mga kawani sa gobyerno ay tatanggalin sila dahil lamang gustong mapagbigyan natin ang kapritso ng ilang mga opisyal ng ating pamahalaan. Pangapat, Madam Speaker, napatunayan na na at sa panahon ng pinagdebatihan natin ito, ang panukalang batas na ito ay impact, magbibigay daan sa mas grabe pang korupsyon sa gobyerno. Ang Office of the Solicitor General, siya ang abugado ng gobyerno-
The gentleman is advised to wrap up his explanation.
Siya rin na magiging abugado ng mga government-owned and controlled corporation. Malinaw na magkakaroon dito ng conflict of interest. Pero binaliwala ito at sinabing hindi raw magkakaroon ng conflict of interest. So, sa mga kadahilan ng ito, Madam Speaker, ang kinatawang ito po ng bayan muna ay bumuboto ng no sa panukalang batas.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to manifest that the result of the voting on House Bill 7376 is as follows. Affirmative votes: one hundred sixty-two; Negative votes: ten; abstention: zero.
The vote is noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 7436. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I assume, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7436, An Act Abolishing the Road Board and Providing for the Distribution and Management of the Motor Vehicles Users' Charged Collections, Amending for the Purpose in Public Act Number 8794. Roll Call of Members, consideration, House Bill Number 7436. Abaya, Abayon, Abillanos, Abu, Abweg, Charon, Akop, Akosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angarakasilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Augmentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casofrance, Casofedilil, Katampco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kosalan, Tizolo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Oso Montalia, Dimopor Abdulla, Dimopor Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Julia, Trer Luis, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guedolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Dakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lilim Kay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapaglaroyong, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolascon, Nyes Malinyaan, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Tagabini, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampago, Sevilla, Rawapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangopan, Sandoval, Santos Rektos, Armento Cesar, Armento Edgar, Savillano, Semas, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estelita, Suansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cattera, Velosa, Vergara, Villaperte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Sumo Ramarkamen, Sumo Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-two members voting in the affirmative, zero against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7436 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 5236. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I assume, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 5236, An Act Providing for the Rank Classification in the Philippine National Police, Amending for the Purpose Section 28 of the Public Act Number 6975, otherwise known as the Department of the Interior and Local Government Act of 1990, and for other purposes. Roll Call of Members, consideration, House Bill Number 5236. Abaya, Abayon, Abillanos, Abu, Abweg, Charon, Akop, Akosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angarakasilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Augmentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmont Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Casofrance, Casofedilil, Katampco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kosalan, Tizolo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Oso Montalia, Dimopor Abdulla, Dimopor Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Julia, Trer Luis, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guedolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goriseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Dakson, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Lilim Kay Chong, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapaglaroyong, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodatatus Huarto, Mangodatatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolascon, Nyes Malinyaan, Wominal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Tagabini, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampago, Sevilla, Rawapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sambar, Sangopan, Sandoval, Santos Rektos, Armento Cesar, Armento Edgar, Savillano, Semas, Xiau, Silverio, Singson, Suansing Estelita, Suansing Horacio, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unabia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Barretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Cattera, Velosa, Vergara, Villaperte, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Sumo Ramarkamen, Sumo Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred sixty-six members voting in the affirmative, zero against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 5236 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move-
Madam Speaker, how is my vote registered, Madam Speaker? Because I motioned that my, I have a negative vote, Madam Speaker.
Again, with one hundred sixty-six members voting in the affirmative, six voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 5236 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 7033. And for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I assume, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 7033, An Act Establishing a Comprehensive System for Registration and Licensing of Social Welfare and Development Agencies and Accreditation of Social Welfare and Development Programs and Services and Incorporating Funds Therefore. Roll Call of Members for consideration of House Bill Number 7033. Abaya, Abayon, Abillanos, Abu, Abweg, Charon, Akop, Akosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alehano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angarakasilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumag Seisai, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Augmentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bulilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Mariabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Predinil, Katampco, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Ko, Kuwanko, Kulyantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kosalan, Tizolo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Oso Montalia, Dimopor Abdulla, Dimopor Muakit Kalid, Duavit, Durano, Di Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Julia, Marie, Ferrer Luis, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Penta Willia, Garbin, Garcia Guedolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Gasin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Guana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Oriodong, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Auradio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labadlabat, Dakson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Chon, Li, Limkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlos, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolascon, Nyes Malinyaoon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Armento Cesar, Armento Edgar Meri, Sabelliano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasios, Suarez, Elbarado, Tambutin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shery, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarte, Vilasco, Vilasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villara, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu Samor Merakarmen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred sixty-six members voting in affirmative, six voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7033 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we proceed to the next bill, would like to greet the guest of the Honorable Jose Christopher Belmonte of the Sixth District of Quezon City. They are from the United Nations Children's Fund, Julian Hayoyes and Rodilisa Baryentos.
The guest of Congressman Belmonte is hereby asked to stand, to be recognized. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 7193. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I assume, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 7193, An Act Providing a Framework for the Right to Adequate Food and Providing Penalties for Violation thereof. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill 7193. Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravu Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castropedenil, Katampo, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Cerrillas, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Oso Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet Marie, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Petebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Auradio Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labadlabat, Dakson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Chon, Li, Limkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlos, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolascon, Nyes Malinyaoon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Armento Cesar, Armento Edgar Meri, Sabelliano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasios, Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambutin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shery, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarte, Vilasco, Vilasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villara, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu Samor Merakarmen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-two members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7193 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 7233. For this purpose, I may request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I assume, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7233, An Act Requiring the Registration of All Users of Subscriber Identity Module Cards. House...Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7233. Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravu Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castrofranz...
Madam Speaker, my vote is no, and I would like to explain my vote.
The vote is noted.
Castelo, Castrofranz, Castropedenil, Katampo, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Cerrillas, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Oso Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Petebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexander, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labadlabat, Dakson, Lagman, Lanete, Lakson, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li Limkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlos, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolascon, Nyes Malinyaoon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Armento Cesar, Armento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasios, Suarez, Elbarado, Tambutin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shery, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarte, Vilasco, Vilasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villara, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu Samor Markamen, Samor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
Madam Speaker, my vote is no, and I will explain my vote.
The vote is noted. With one hundred sixty-seven members voting in affirmative, six voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7233 is approved on third reading. The Honorable Casilau is hereby recognized to explain his vote. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam...Madam Speaker. This representation voted no to this bill on the following reasons. First, a regime that treats political dissent as a crime and intolerant with criticisms. This bill will be an added arsenal to suppress these criticisms and dissent. Second, the bill, Madam Speaker, threatens the right to privacy of its citizen. Each subscriber has full control over the mode and exchange of communication. There is no foolproof, Madam Speaker, written in the bill that prevents or ensures from leaks or vulnerability of information of subscribers being exposed to scrupulous or criminal acts. Third, Madam Speaker, this bill is an added cost, even though the proponents denied additional expenses, but later, in the following interpolation of this representation, Madam Speaker, multiple ownership of subscription or SIM cards to be registered will be an added cost. And lastly, Madam Speaker, it is a myth that this bill is a crime-fighting tool to combat criminal or terrorist acts. It has been proven on other countries who applied similar SIM registration that has failed in combating or reducing crimes and terrorist acts. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The explanation is here now. The Honorable Sarate is now recognized for his explanation. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This represent...by and by the representation also votes no to this proposed bill on the following grounds, Madam Speaker. First, during the interpolation, this representation emphasized that the potential violation of constitutional rights. We believe, Madam Speaker, that real-time collection of data is still unconstitutional as it blatantly violates the right to privacy. However, the intention of this SIM card registration, the supposed purpose of deterring crime so that it will become effective requires the collection of data which we believe is unconstitutional. It clearly violates the right to privacy of the subscribers. Second, Madam Speaker, it was admitted during the deliberation of this bill that it will cost not only to the government but even to the subscriber, addition...an added burden and additional cost to the subscribers. And finally, Madam Speaker, we voted no because, as mentioned earlier by my colleague, mandatory registration of prepaid mobile phones is not the answer to terrorism, crime, or the impunity that persists in our country. With the registration of SIM cards implemented, we have to brace ourselves for a new crime wave that is the theft of SIM cards, illegal resale of stolen SIM cards, identity theft, and other such crimes. It will even spawn new crimes in the coming days or in the future if this bill becomes a law. That's all, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 7260. For this purpose, may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting. I assume, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7260, An Act Declaring February Fourth Every Year as the Philippine American War Memorial Day. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7260. Abaya, Abayon, Abiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensha, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barzaga, Batawil, Batokabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bilaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravu Merabida, Brosas, Bulut Bigtang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderon, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau. Madam Speaker, my vote is yes.
Noted.
Castelo, Castrofranz, Castropedenil, Katampo, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Cerrillas, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Cohuango, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, Del Oso Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhay, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Petebelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Goreseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosos, Javier, Co, Conghun, Labadlabat, Dakson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lia Chon, Li Limkaychong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlos, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolascon, Nyes Malinyaoon, Waminal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Saktalan, Sagarbaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Armento Cesar, Armento Edgar, Sabelliano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasios, Suarez, Elbarado, Tambutin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shery, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenyas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Beretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Vilarte, Vilasco, Vilasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Villapuerte, Villanueva, Villara, Suárez, Villarica, Villarin, Violago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu Samor Markamen... Yu, Samora Marcamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-five members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7260 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7321 and for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7321, Anak establishing the no call and no tax registration system providing penalties for violations thereof. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7321. Abaya, Abaya, Nabelliosa, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Ako, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Garacasilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumagcesay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Umentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katampo, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Ceriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Koango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Corezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Pentebella, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Grincharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dom, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Co, Konghun, Labadabad, Naxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasitin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychon, Lubrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlos, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadato Suarto, Magodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez Martinez, Matugas Meliana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nuyas Malinyaoon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao Paduano, Palma, Pancho Panginiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisis Sagabas, Kimboradasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, El Lampagos, Ribilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Savillano, Semas, Yau, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Elvarado, Tammuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shery, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Bretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilade, Bilasco, Bilasco Catera, Velosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Rasa Suarez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biolago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Marcamen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-five members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7321 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 3988 and for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and hereafter, and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 3988, Anak providing for the regime of complete separation of property as the governing regime in the absence of a marriage settlement or when the regime agreed upon is void amending for the purpose Article 75 and 147 of Title IV of Executive Order Number 209 amended by Executive Order Number 227, otherwise known as the Family Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill 3988. Abaya, Abaya, Nabelliosa, Abu, Abweg, Acharon, Ako, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Garacasilio, Antonino, Antonio, Aquinumagcesay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsensa, Umentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberz, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabe, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biason, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Bektang, Kagas, Kalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilau, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katampo, Cayetano, Celeste, Serapica, Ceriles, Chavez, Chipeco, Co, Koango, Culiantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Corezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Ferrer Luis, Periol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuna, Pentebella, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Grincharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Heron, Goana Cristina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Herrera, Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Co, Konghun, Labadabad, Naxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasitin, Liachon, Li, Ling Kaychon, Lubrigat, Lopez, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlos, Lopez Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapalaroye, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadato Suarto, Magodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Marinho, Marquez Martinez, Matugas Meliana, Mending Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nuyas Malanyaoon, Waminal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Nola, Pacquiao Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panginiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisis Sagabas, Kimboradasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Ribilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocamora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagabaria, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbagon, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rector, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Meri, Savillano, Semas, Yau, Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estelita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez, Suarez, Elvarado, Tammuting, Tan Angelina, Tan Mercado, Tan Shery, Tejada, Tevez, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Tolentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Bretta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilade, Bilasco, Bilasco Catera, Velosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Rasa Suarez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biolago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melesio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora Maria Carmen, Samora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-five members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 3988 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, before we proceed with the local bills on third reading, I move to recognize the Honorable Antonio Tiño of Partilist Act Teachers on a matter of personal and collective privilege.
The Honorable Tiño is, is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege. And this time, Madam Speaker, I really mean that. Ang pak sang pag-uusapan ko po ay may direktang epekto sa pagkampan ko ng tungkulin bilang individual na kinatawan ng kongresong ito at may epekto rin sa pagkampan ng tungkulin ng kapulungang ito ng House of Representatives na iniyaatas mismo ng konstitusyon. Nagpapatungkol po ako sa desisyon ng Corti Suprema kamakilan na tanggalin sa puwesto si Chief Justice Maria Lourdes Sereno sa pamamagitan ng co-warranto petition. Napakalinaw po ang konstitusyon natin particular Article 11, accountability of public officers sa Section 2 nito, malinaw na sinasabi. And let me read. The President, the Vice President, the Members of the Supreme Court, the Members of the Constitutional Commissions and the Ombudsman may be removed from office on impeachment for and conviction of culpable violation of the Constitution, treason, bribery, graft and corruption, other high crimes or betrayal of public trust. All other public officers and employees may be removed from office as provided by law but not by impeachment. At dagdagang ko po po sa Section 3 nito, sinabi, the House of Representatives shall have the exclusive power to initiate all cases of impeachment. And further down in this section, sinabi rin, the Senate shall have the sole power to try and decide all cases of impeachment. So napakalinaw po sa ating konstitusyon na ang tanging paraan para tanggalin sa puwesto ang nakaupong sa kasong ito. Chief Justice ng Corti Suprema ay sa pamamagitan ng impeachment. Ngunit sa desisyon naganap nung isang linggo ay nilabag at inikutan po ang napakalinaw na itinatak dang ito ng konstitusyon. Ginamit po ang co-warranto. Ang isa sa mga justice na nagdisent, tinawag itong legal abomination. Kahit 'yung mga mahistrado ng Corti Suprema, tila alam nila na may problema sa gagawin nilang pagtanggal sa Chief Justice sa pamamagitan ng co-warranto. Tilay 'yun ang pinahihiwatig nung pagkakaschedule ng kanilang paglabas ng desisyon ng hatol nung May 11 sa isa pang special session. Nagtakda ng special session para lamang desisyonan ang co-warranto. Sa halip na 'yung regular session nila na dapat ay maganap, in fact, dapat ngayon. Malinaw po na ang intensyon ay unahan na ang kongreso na muling magbubukas ng session at kung saan nakasalang ang impeachment complaint na dapat ay talakayan na ng kapulungang ito. Bakit po ganun? Bakit po tayo tumututol sa pangyayaring ito? Ang problema po sa inilabas na desisyon ng Corti Suprema na nagpahintulot ng pagtanggal sa Chief Justice ng Supreme Court through co-warranto ay pinaliit na po ang impeachment na tinatakda ng konstitusyon bilang isa na lamang sa mga kaparaanan ng pagtanggal sa puwesto sa mga itinakdang matataas na opisyal na nakasad sa konstitusyon. It is now, impeachment has now been reduced to a mere option for removal of the high officials of government including the President, the Vice President, the Members of the Supreme Court, the Members of the Constitutional Commissions. At sino-sino ba 'yung mga constitutional commissions na ito? Balikan lang natin. Ito ang mga membro ng Commission on Audit, ng Civil Service Commission at saka ng Commission on Elections at maging ng ombudsman. So ginawa na lampong mere option. Isa sa mga option ang impeachment sa halip na natatanging paraan para tanggalin ang nakaupong mga matataas na opisyal. Sa ganitong desisyon, tila ipinantay na po sa desisyon ng Corti Suprema ang papel ng Solicitor General na siyang may kapangyarihan na ayon sa desisyon, walang tanning, walang time limit at anytime kinikilala daw ang kapangyarihan ng Solicitor General na magsampa ng co-warranto petition. Tilay pinapantay na po ang kapangyarihan sa co-warranto ng Solgen sa exclusive power ng House of Representatives na mag-initiate ng mga impeachment complaint. At tilay pinapantay na po ang kapangyarihan ng mga mahistrado ng Corti Suprema na magpasya sa co-warranto petition sa exclusive power na itinatakda ng konstitusyon sa Sinado na magpasya sa mga impeachment complaint. Bakit ganyan ang itinakda ng konstitusyon, Madam Speaker? At bakit kailangan ipaglaban natin ang, ang tinakdang responsibilidad particular sa kongreso kaugnay sa impeachment? Sinabi po rito na may mga opisina at may mga opisyal na ang tanging paraan lang ng pagtanggal sa kanila ay through impeachment para una mapangalagaan po ang kasarinlan o independence ng puwestong ito. Para matiyak po magagampanan ng mga natukoy na opisyal nito ang kanilang tungkulin ng walang pangamba na pakikialaman sila o na may impluwensyahan ng iba pang mga makapangyarihang puwesto o opisina o ahensya ng gobyerno. At tinatakda rin na impeachment ang natatanging paraan para matiyak ang paggana ng prinsipyo ng checks and balances para mabantayan po ng mga opisyal na ito ang isat-isa sa pagkampan nila sa tungkulin. Wala na po tayo sa panahon ng mga hari. Hindi na po pinapahintulutan sa isang demokratikong lipunan na kapag sinabi, halimbawa ng presidente, na quote, "I am putting you on notice na I am now your enemy and you have to be out of the Supreme Court." Yan ang sinabi ni Pangulong Duterte tungkol kay Chief Justice Sereno. Hindi na po pinahiintulutan na kapag sinabi ng isang tao, particular ng presidente ng Pilipinas, "Ayoko sayo, dapat kang matanggal." Hindi po ito automaticong masusunod. Sabi po sa konstitusyon, kailangang dumaan sa proseso ng impeachment na ang may responsibilidad ay ang hiwalay na sangay ng gobyerno sa kasong ito ang kongreso. Sa ganyang paraan po, sinisikap na maprotektahan ang tinatawag na kasarinlan ng iba't ibang sangay ng gobyerno at tinitiyak din 'yung tinatawag na checks and balance. Ngunit, sa nangyari po, tinawag na po ni Justice Cagiwa, isa po sa mga nagdisent sa pagpahintulot nila sa pagpahintulot nila, sa pagtanggal sa Chief Justice bilang nakaupong constitutionally protected official. Sabi po ni Justice Cagiwa, "This case marks the time when the court commits seppuku without honor." Nagpakamatay daw po ang Cortes Suprema ng walang dangal. Pagkilala po ito, ni Justice Cagiwa, na mabigat po ang naging paglabag sa konstitusyon at malaki po ang panganib sa karapatan ng mamamayan sa ating lipunan kung pahihintulutang manatili ang desisyon ito. Idadagdag ko lang po na kung mananatili ang desisyon ito ng Cortes Suprema, hindi lang po nagpakamatay. Ng walang dangal ang Cortes Suprema, binigyan pa niya ng makapangyarihang sandata ang presidente laban sa iba pang matataas na opisyal at ahensya ng gobyerno na may tungkulin at responsibilidad sa taong bayan na bantayan. Lalo na ang ehekutibo, laban sa abuso at pang-aapi. Kung pahintulutang manatili ang desisyon ito, kaugnay sa co-warranto, ay isa na namang pong malaking hadlang sa landas ng tirania at one-man rule ang mawawala. Kaya hinahamon ko po ang pamunuan ng House of Representatives, ang bawat isa sa mga kasamahan natin na tumindig, ipaglaban natin ang ating kapangyarihan, ang ating responsibilidad na binibigay sa atin sa konstitusyon, ang tanging kapangyarihan na magtanggal ng Chief Justice ng Cortes Suprema o ng iba pang mga matataas na opisyal alinsunod sa konstitusyon. Yan po ang ating hamon at ipagtanggol po natin ang kapangyarihan, responsibilidad ng kapulungan ito, ipagtanggol natin ang karapatan ng mamamayang Pilipino. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Antonio Tinio to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
Sir Speaker, Sir Speaker, I'm Madam Speaker, I'm sorry.
The Honorable Marcoletta is recognized.
I'm a little bit late in registering my desire to expound some questions by way of interpolation to the privileged seats of the Honorable Tinio, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Tinio has already sat. Or is he willing to entertain?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Uh, move to suspend.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the Honorable Dante, Ro Dante Marcoletta has manifested to withdraw his previous intention and therefore I move, and I move that, again to reiterate, that we refer the speech of the Honorable Antonio Tinio to the Committee on Rules for its Appropriate Action.
An objection here in the speech of Honorable Tinio is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, right now I move to recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas of Parcavis Gabriela on a short manifestation. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Brosas is recognized for her short manifestation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This representation would like to manifest its concern on the Supreme Court usurpation of legislative powers over the impeachable government officials through its recent ruling on the co-warrant petition versus CJ Maria Lourdes Sireno. Nakabahala po ang representasyong ito sa paglusaw sa hiwalay at magkaibang responsibilidad at kapangyarihan ng three co-equal branches sa gobyerno. Mula sa deklarasyon ng presidente na kalaban ito ang punong mahistrado hanggang sa pagsampa ng co-warranto case. Paulit-ulit nitong ginagahasa ang hustisia at demokrasya ng bansa. Ang desisyon sa co-warranto ay magiging bad precedent na magbubukas sa pag-abuso ng judicial powers. Ninakaw ng mga nagsulong ng co-warranto ang kapangyarihan ng lihislatura na mapatalsek ang isang opisyal sa pamamaraan ng impeachment upang makonsolida at mapasakamay ng isang tao ang kapangyarihan ng tatlong sangay ng gobyerno. Tinanggal na ang tabing sa mata ng hustisia. Mulat-mulat nitong inaatake ang karapatan, obligasyon, at kapangyarihan ng Kongreso. Congress should not take such mutilation and disregard of its power lightly. Dito nakasalala ang pundasyon ng demokrasya at check and balances sa gobyerno. With all three branches under one rule, one can simply snap his fingers and democracy would cease to exist. Let this chamber be firm and stand on its ground that it is the right venue and has the sole legal power and obligation to try and unseat an impeachable official. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The manifestation of the lady is hereby noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Sara Ilago of Parcavis Kabataan for a short manifestation.
The Honorable Ilago is hereby recognized for her short manifestation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This representation would like to express its support to the call of the Honorable Tinio as regards to letting the impeachment proceedings against Supreme Court Chief Justice Sireno run its course here in the House of Representatives. First and foremost, to allow the Supreme Court decision to preempt and worse, to stop the proceedings in the House of Representatives is to permit the justices to usurp the power of legislators. In fact, even if the High Court has spoken, the legal community, including lawyers from the NUPL or the National Union of People's Lawyers and various lawyers from different firms, have already questioned the interpretation of the Supreme Court. To allow the impeachment case pending before this body to be archived is to preempt the ongoing issue. If our concern is to avoid a constitutional crisis, Madam Speaker, then to archive it at this stage is to worsen the already growing crisis. Nakakabahala po na ito ay pagsunod doon sa sinabi ng presidente sa isang forum nitong nakaraang buwan lang. And I quote, Madam Speaker, to, uh, this is the president to the Chief Justice Sireno, "I am putting you on notice that I am your enemy and you have to be out of the Supreme Court." Na matapos ang isang buwan ay naging pabor na ang ruling ng Supreme Court sa co-warrant petition na tanggalin ang Chief Justice. Thus, to refuse voting and deliberation on the impeachment in the House of Representatives is to recognize the validity of the co-warrant petition filed and granted against an impeachable official. Will we want to be remembered as the Congress that sided with the unconstitutional? We are aware of the questionability of the Supreme Court's decision, yet will we tolerate it? Madam Speaker, this will not be a waste of time for, we have already spent almost four months of deliberations in the committee level. Ang representasyon din na ito ay hindi nakapagbigay o nakapagbahagi na mga concerns ng ating mga constituents sa mga kabataan, sa mga naturang mga pagtinig. Will we be willing to allow another co-equal branch to usurp the power of legislators? Thus, we implore our fellow colleagues to support the same, primarily on the ground that we are duty-bound as legislators to decide on the articles of impeachment and should our colleagues here find it to be substantial, transmit the same to the Senate in the regular conduct of an impeachment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The manifestation of the Honorable Ilago is noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to recognize the Honorable Carlos Sarate of Parcavis Bayan Munafor for a short manifestation.
The Honorable Zarate is hereby recognized for his short manifestation.
Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker. Bilang dagdag sa mga nasabi na aking mga kasamahan, ang usapin ng pagpapatalsek kay Chief Justice Sireno ay hindi lang usaping legal. Sa katunayan, malinaw na ito ay isang usapin political, Madam Speaker. Ang ginawa ng Cortes Suprema o ng mga mahistrado ng Cortes Suprema, ay they usurp the power of Congress to remove unimpeachable official. Sa katunayan, parang ginawa ng mga mahistrado ay they rewrite the constitution by inserting another provision in the constitution na pwede na palang tanggalin ang mga impeachable officials not only by impeachment, but even by a co-warrant proceedings. It appears now that a mere provision in the rules of court now trumps constitutional provision, especially in relation to the removal of an impeachable official. In effect, Madam Speaker, what the justices of the Supreme Court did is they castrated the power of Congress to remove impeachable officials and to convict the evidential warrants these impeachable officials. So ang ating panawagan ngayon, Madam Speaker, is for Congress, especially the House of Representatives, to assert its role by asking the, first, the justices to set aside its ruling. And having already voted, we also are challenging the leadership of the House to transmit to the Senate the articles of impeachment so that the Senate can start its trial, can begin the trial of the Chief Justice Sireno and if evidential warrant, convict him. But if it's not, then issue a decree of acquittal so that the processes laid out in our constitution will be taken. So muli, Madam Speaker, ito ang ating mga hamon, lalong-lalo na sa ating mga kasamahan dito sa Kongreso. Wag nating hayaan na kapunin ng ating kapangyarihan na tilalaga ng ating saligang batas. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
The manifestation of the Honorable Zarate is hereby noted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7180. And for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for the nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7180, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Father Julian C. Masana. Roll call of members consideration, House Bill Number 7180. Abaya, Abayan, Belenosha, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Ako, Pa Costa, Costa Alba, Adyong, Advinkula, Agarow, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Garakastilio, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagseisay, Aragones, Arbison, Arcilia, Sarena, Sanchesa, Umitado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barberes, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilla, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulutang, Kagaskalalan, Calderon, Galixtrobiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casillo, Caselo, Casofrance, Casofederil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chavez, Chapeco, Co, Koakko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, De Jesus, De Venero, Defensor, Delmar, Delusario, Delosomontalia, Dimaporondula, Dimaporokalid, Dua Vitturano, Di Ilago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Armita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Penar, Juliet, Terel Luis, Feriol, Prohrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goanacustina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Corseta, Gulyas, Hernandez, Reradi, Hofer, Haloso, Xavier, Kokong Hun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanette, Logan, Lasitin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaitchong, La Brigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Card, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapakalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatus Warto, Magodadatus Ajit, Marcoletta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyon, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Tegabini, Pacquiao, Padwano, Palma, Pancha, Panganiban, Panotes, Opandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primicia, Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramirezato, Ramos, Elampaco, Sevilla, Ropuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rudigasisito, Druiges Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roques, Akdalans, Garberias, Sahalis, Alceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Sambars, Akopan, San Doval, Santos Reckto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semas, Shaw, Silberio, Singson, Swan Sing, Estelitas, Swan Singurashos, Suarez, Selbarado, Tambutig, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Shiny, Tijada, Telvez, Chanco, Ting, Tinio, Talentino, Peñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasca, Villaswatera, Velosa, Vergara, Bilaporte, Bilanueva, Bilerasa, Suarez, Bilyarica, Bilyarin, Bilago, Yap Arno, Yap Milexo, Yap Victor, Yu, Somor Marcamin, Somor Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With 176 members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7180 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7309. And for this purpose, may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7387, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Quok Hing Carlos Jung. House Bill Number 7309, An Act Creating the Positions for Judges at Large, Amending for the Purpose, Batas, Mapasabilang 129, Otherwise Known as the Judiciary Organization Act of 1918 and Propeting Funds Therefore. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7309. Abaya, Abayon, Abelenosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Ako, PaCosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Satens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulutetang, Kagaskalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catango, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Co' Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuahua, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, de Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, de Lozario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdulla, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Aurelio Dong, Gonzales Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Reradi, Hofer, Halosso, Xavier, Kokong Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, La Brigat, López Benur, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatus Huarto, Magodadatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabellano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suansing, Estelita, Suansingoraso, Suárez, Elbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilapuerte, Bilanueva, Bilera, Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarín, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Marcamen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7309 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7387. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7387, An Act Granting Philippine Citizenship to Quok Hing Carlos Hui. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7387. Abaya, Abayon, Abelenosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Ako, PaCosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Satens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulutetang, Kagaskalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catango, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Co' Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuahua, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, de Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, de Lozario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdulla, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Dong, Gonzales Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Reradi, Hofer, Halosso, Xavier, Kokong Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, La Brigat, López Benur, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatus Huarto, Magodadatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabellano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suansing, Estelita, Suansingoraso, Suárez, Elbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilapuerte, Bilanueva, Bilera, Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarín, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Marcamen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7387 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for your consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7392. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 7392, An Act Institutionalizing the Alternative Learning System in the Basic Education for Out-of-School Children, Youth, and Adults, Persons with Disabilities, Indigenous Peoples, and Other Marginalized Sectors of Society and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Roll call of members, for consideration, House Bill Number 7392. Abaya, Abayon, Abelenosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Ako, PaCosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Satens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulutetang, Kagaskalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catango, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Co' Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuahua, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, de Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, de Lozario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdulla, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet Marie, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Óscar, Garin Sharon, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Dong, Gonzales Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Reradi, Hofer, Halosso, Xavier, Kokong Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, La Brigat, López Benur, López Carlos, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatus Huarto, Magodadatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Viniola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Ribilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Merri, Sabellano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suansing, Estelita, Suansingoraso, Suárez, Si Albarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilapuerte, Bilanueva, Bilera, Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarín, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Marcamen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7392 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7422. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7422, An Act Mandating the Integration of the National Building Code of the Philippines as one of the major subjects in the Bachelor of Science courses in Civil Engineering, Mechanical Engineering, Electrical Engineering, Sanitary Engineering, and Architecture, and its inclusion as a topic in the licensure examinations for these courses. Roll call of members, for consideration, of House Bill 7422. Abaya, Abayon, Abelenosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Ako, PaCosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Satens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulutetang, Kagaskalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catango, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Co', Co' Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuahua, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, de Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, de Lozario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdulla, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Ferrer, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin Óscar, Garin Sharon, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Dong, Gonzales Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Reradi, Hofer, Halosso, Xavier, Kokong Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, La Brigat, López Benur, López Carlos, López Manuel Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatus Huarto, Magodadatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlos, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Viniola, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Ribilia, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar Merri, Sabellano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suansing, Estelita, Suansingoraso, Suárez, Si Albarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilapuerte, Bilanueva, Bilera, Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarín, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Marcamen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7422 is hereby approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7365. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7365, An Act Creating Four Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Fourth Judicial Region to be stationed in San Pablo City, Province of Laguna, and Appropriating Funds Therefore, Amending for the Purpose Section 14E of Batas Mammasabi Ling 129, Otherwise Known As the Judiciary Organization Act of 1980, as amended. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7365. Abaya, Abayon, Abelenosa, Abu, Abueg, Acharon, Ako, PaCosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Bilyar, Albano, Alkala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angaracastillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinumagsaysay, Aragonés, Arbison, Arcillas, Arenas, Satens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulutetang, Kagaskalalang, Calderón, Calixturbiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Catango, Caetano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chávez, Chapeco, Co' Wanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Cosalan, Crisologo, Cuahua, Corisma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, de Jesús, de Venecia, de Vera, Defensor, Del Mar, de Lozario, de Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdulla, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit Durano, Di Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusevi, Verdone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrer, Juliet, Ferrer, Luis, Feriol, Florrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose, García Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Alexandria, Gonzales Dong, Gonzales Fernando, Gruseta, Gulyas, Hernández, Reradi, Hofer, Halosso, Xavier, Kokong Hun, Labadlabad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilim, Kaychong, La Brigat, López Benur, López Carlos, López Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Magodadatus Huarto, Magodadatus Ajit, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyao, Mominal, Ocampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vini, Pacquiao, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Primicia Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Elampagos, Sevilla, Ropapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbrias, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Doval, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento César, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabellano, Semas, Xiao, Silberio, Singson, Suansing, Estelita, Suansingoraso, Suárez, Si Albarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupasti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Oy Juliet, Oy Rolando, Oy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bilarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Vergara, Bilapuerte, Bilanueva, Bilera, Suárez, Bilyarica, Bilyarín, Bilago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Marcamen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against, and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7365 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7366. And for this purpose, may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7366, An Act Creating Four Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the National Capital Region, in the National Capital Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Kalaokan, Appropriating Funds Therefore, Amending for the Purpose Section 14D of Batas Mammasabi Ling 129, Otherwise Known As the Judiciary Organization Act of 1980, as amended. Roll call of members, consideration, House Bill Number 7366. Abaya, Abayon, Abellanos, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magzaysay, Aragones, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalan, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chapeco, Co, Cuah, Cojantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentevelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Karin Richard, Karin Charon, Gata Taiga, Chalian, Heron, Go Anna Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Alroydon, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halloso, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Li, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Ma Kapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marques, Martínez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyao, Noaminalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binin, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisiesa Gabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sahares, Alceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semas, Yau Silberio, Sinson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rajos, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico. Oi Juliet, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Velosa Vergara, Villapuerta, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamore Mar, Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7366 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7367, and for this purpose may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7367, an act renewing two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and one additional branch of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the fourth judicial, fourth judicial region to be stationed in the city of Santa Rosa, Laguna, and appropriating funds therefore. Amending for the purpose Section 14E and Section 29 of Batas Pambasabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7367. Abaya, Abayon, Abellanos, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magzaysay, Aragones, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalan, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chapeco, Co, Cuah, Cojantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentevelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Karin Richard, Karin Charon, Gata Taiga, Chalian, Heron, Go Anna Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halloso, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Li, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Lo, Loyola, Ma Kapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marques, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyao, Noaminalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binin, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisiesa Gabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sahares, Alceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabillano, Semas, Yau Silberio, Sinson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rajos, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico, Oi Juliet, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Velosa Vergara, Villapuerta, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamore Mar, Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7367 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7405, and for this purpose may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 7405, an act renewing two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities for Binian City in the fourth judicial region and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 29 of Batas Pambasabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill 7405. Abaya, Abayon, Abellanos, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magzaysay, Aragones, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalan, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chapeco, Co, Cojuanc, Cojantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentevelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Enrique, Garcia Albano, Karin Oscar, Karin Charon, Gata Taiga, Chalian, Heron, Go Anna Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzala, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halldios, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Li, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuluis, Loyola, Ma Kapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marques, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyao, Noaminalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisiesa Gabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maxim, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sahares, Alceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Merri, Sabillano, Semas, Yau Silberio, Sinson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rajos, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Turintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico. Oi Juliet, Oi Rolando, Oi Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Velosa Vergara, Villapuerta, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamore Mar, Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero abstention, House Bill Number 7405 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7385, and for this purpose may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7385, an act renewing the franchise granted to Philippine Communications Satellite Corporation, PilcomSat, to construct, install, maintain and operate in the Philippines ground satellite terminal stations for communication with satellite facilities and delivery to common carriers. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill 7385. Abaya, Abayon, Abellanos, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magzaysay, Aragones, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalan, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chapeco, Co, Cojuanc, Cojantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentevelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Karin Oscar, Karin Charon, Gata Taiga, Chalian, Heron, Go Anna Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halloso, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Li, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuluis, Loyola, Ma Kapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marques, Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyao, Noaminalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisiesa Gabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sahares, Alceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Merri, Sabillano, Semas, Yau Silberio, Sinson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rajos, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Turintino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Unico. Oi Juliet, Oi Rolando, Olibareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Velosa Vergara, Villapuerta, Villanueva, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Villarin, Villago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milese, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamore Mar, Carmen, Zamora Ronaldo, Sam, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7385 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7386, and for this purpose may I ask that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill 7386, an act renewing for another twenty-five years the franchise granted to the Andres Bonipassio College Broadcasting System Incorporated under Republic Act Number 8120 entitled, an act granting the Andres Bonipassio College Broadcasting System Incorporated a franchise to construct, maintain and operate radio broadcasting stations and stations for television in the island of Mindanao for educational, cultural and commercial purposes. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill 7386. Abaya, Abayon, Abellanos, Abu, Abueg, Charon, Aco, Pacosta, Costa Alba, Adjong, Adbingkula, Agaraw, Agabaw, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magzaysay, Aragones, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Atsens, Aumentado, Bagaw, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bundok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Meravida, Brosas, Bulut Big Tang, Kagas, Kalalan, Calderon, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casilo, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapica, Siriles, Chaves, Chapeco, Co, Cojuanc, Cojantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Coselan, Crisologo, Cuah, Cuarestma, Cueba, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buahin, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Josebio, Ibardone, Pariñas, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Ferriol, Floyrendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fentevelia, Garbin, Garcia Guendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Karin Oscar, Karin Charon, Gata Taiga, Chalian, Heron, Go Anna Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Rosetta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halloso, Javier, Co, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Li, Li, Limcaichong, Lobrigat, Lopez Benur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuluis, Loyola, Ma Kapagalaroya, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangodadato Suarto, Mangodadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marques Martinez, Matugas, Millana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jerico, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nunez Malanyao, Noaminalo, Campo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Bininola, Pakia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primisiesa Gabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Revilia, Ruapuno, Robes, Rocomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo Rojas, Akdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sahares, Alceda, Salimbangan, Salo, Salon, San Bar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Repto, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Merri, Sabillano, Semas, Yau Silberio, Sinson, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Rajos, Suarez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves, Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Treñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia... Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes Chanco, Ting Tiño, Tulintino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti Umali, Unavia, Ungab Uniko. Uy Juliet, uy Rolando, uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Bilosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Raza Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samore Maria Carmen, Samore Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero voting in abstention, House Bill Number 7386 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7293, and for this purpose may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill, House Bill Number 7293, an act declaring the Kaparkan Falls in Barangay Caganayan, Municipality of Tinik, Province of Abra, and Ico Tourism Site, establishing the Kaparkan Falls Development Council and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members for consideration of House Bill 7293. Abaya, Abayo, Nabiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angar Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Sanchez, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Marie Vida, Brosas, Bulutvektang, Kagaskalalan, Calderón, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Caselo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapika, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kojuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus de Venecia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Mohamed Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita, Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrel Juliet, Ferrel Luis, Ferriol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Albano, Garin Oscar, Garin Charon, Casatay, Gatsalyan, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexandria, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di. Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko, Konghun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Li, Limcaichon, Lobrigat, Lopez Benjur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manu Luis, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Manudadato Soharto, Manudadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nonius Malanyon, Noam Inal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Vininola, Pacia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Remilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahale, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary. Sabiliano, Semas, Xiao Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio. Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes Chanco, Ting Tiño, Tulintino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti Umali, Unavia, Ungab Uniko. Uy Juliet, uy Rolando, uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Bilosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Raza Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samore Maria Carmen, Samore Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in the affirmative, zero voting against and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7293 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7311, and for this purpose may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call, to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7311, an act creating barangay to be known as barangay Santa Maria in the Municipality of Abade Ilog, Province of Occidental Mindoro. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7311. Abaya, Abayo, Nabiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angar Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Sanchez, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Marie Vida, Brosas, Bulutvektang, Kagaskalalan, Calderón, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Caselo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapika, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kojuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus de Venecia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita, Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrel Juliet, Ferrel Luis, Ferriol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Casatay, Gatsalyan, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexander, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di. Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko, Konghun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilimcaichon, Lobrigat, Lopez Benjur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Manudadato Soharto, Manudadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco, Nonius Malanyon, Noam Inal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binii, Pacia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Remilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahale, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semas, Xiao Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio. Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes Chanco, Ting Tiño, Talentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti Umali, Unavia, Ungab Uniko. Uy Juliet, uy Rolando, uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Bilosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Raza Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samore Maria Carmen, Samore Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred, with one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7311 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7345, and for this purpose may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7345, an act establishing the Sambwanga del Norte Sports Academy and Training Center in the Municipality of Guitalac, Province of Sambwanga del Norte and popiting funds therefore. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7345. Abaya, Abayo, Nabiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angar Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Sanchez, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Marie Vida, Brosas, Bulutvektang, Kagaskalalan, Calderón, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Caselo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapika, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kojuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus de Venecia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita, Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrel Juliet, Ferrel Luis, Ferriol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Casatay, Gatsalyan, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexander, Gonzalez Arroyo Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di. Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko, Konghun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilimcaichon, Lobrigat, Lopez Benjur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Manudadato Soharto, Manudadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nonius Malanyon, Noam Inal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binii, Pacia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Remilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahale, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semas, Xiao Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio. Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Chanco, Ting, Tiño, Talentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti Umali, Unavia, Ungab Uniko. Uy Juliet, uy Rolando, uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Bilosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Raza Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samore Maria Carmen, Samore Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7345 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7355, and for this purpose may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7355, an act converting the Siga Memorial District Hospital in the City of Tabaco, Province of Albay, into an extension hospital of the Big Old Regional Training and Teaching Hospital and increasing its beds, bed capacity from fifty to one hundred fifty beds to be now known as the Dr. Lorenzo P. Siga Memorial District Hospital and popiting funds therefore. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7355. Abaya, Abayo, Nabiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angar Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Sanchez, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Marie Vida, Brosas, Bulutvektang, Kagaskalalan, Calderón, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Caselo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapika, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kojuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus de Venecia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita, Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrel Juliet, Ferrel Luis, Ferriol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Casatay, Gatsalyan, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexander, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di. Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko, Konghun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilimcaichon, Lobrigat, Lopez Benjur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Manudadato Soharto, Manudadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nonius Malanyon, Noam Inal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binii, Pacia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Remilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahale, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semas, Xiao Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio. Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Chanco, Ting Tiño, Talentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti Umali, Unavia, Ungab Uniko. Uy Juliet, uy Rolando, uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Bilosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Raza Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samore Maria Carmen, Samore Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7355 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 7363, and for this purpose may I ask the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll of members for nominal voting.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the measure and thereafter call the roll of members for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 7363, an act renaming the Province of Capostela Bali as the Province of Dawod de Oro. Roll call of members, consideration of House Bill Number 7363. Abaya, Abayo, Nabiliyanoza, Abu, Abweg, Atcharon, Akop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adjong, Advinkula, Agarau, Agabau, Aglipay Biliar, Albano, Alkala, Alihano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angar Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Aquino Magseisai, Aragonés, Abison, Arcillas, Arenas, Sanchez, Augmentado, Bagau, Bagaching, Bagilat, Banal, Barber's, Barsaga, Batawil, Batukabi, Bautista Bandigan, Belaro, Belmonte Feliciano, Belmonte Jose Christopher, Belmonte Ricardo, Binites, Vernos, Bertis, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Marie Vida, Brosas, Bulutvektang, Kagaskalalan, Calderón, Calixtorubiano, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kari, Casila, Caselo, Castro Franz, Castro Pedenil, Katanko, Kaitano, Celeste, Serapika, Siriles, Chaves, Chipeco, Ko, Kojuanko, Coliantes, Cortez, Cortuna, Kusalan, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Dasa, Jesus de Venecia, De Vera, Defensor, Delmar, Del Rosario, De Losa Montalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Khalid, Duabit, Durano, Di, Ilago, Inverga, Irise, Irigel, Ermita, Buain, Scudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Yusebio, Ibardone, Fariñas, Fernando, Ferrel Juliet, Ferrel Luis, Ferriol, Ploirendo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Pentebelia, Garbin, Garcia Gwendolin, Garcia Jose, Garcia Albano, Garin Richard, Garin Charon, Casatay, Gatsalyan, Heron, Goana Christina, Go Mark, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Alexander, Gonzalez Dong, Gonzalez Fernando, Gorseta, Gulyas Hernandez, Herrera Di. Hofer, Halosso, Sabier, Ko, Konghun, Labadlabad, Laxon, Lagman, Lanete, Laugan, Lasatin, Liachon, Lilimcaichon, Lobrigat, Lopez Benjur, Lopez Carlo, Lopez Manuel, Loyola, Makapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Manudadato Soharto, Manudadato Sajid, Marcoleta, Marcos Mariño, Marquez Martínez, Matugas, Miliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nogralis Jeriko, Nogralis Carlo, Nolasco, Nonius Malanyon, Noam Inal, Okampo, Olivares, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Binii, Pacia, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Premisiya Sagabas, Kimbo, Radasa, Ramiresato, Ramos, Lampagos, Remilia, Roapuno, Robes, Rokomora, Rodriguez Isidro, Rodriguez Maximo, Roman Romero, Romualdes, Romaldo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbaria, Sahale, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Salon, Zambar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Rektos, Sarmiento Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar, Sabiliano, Semas, Xiao Silberio, Singson, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio. Suarez, Sielbarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Teves Chanco, Ting Tiño, Talentino, Trenya, Stugna, Tupas, Ti Umali, Unavia, Ungab Uniko. Uy Juliet, uy Rolando, uy Barreta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Villarde, Villasco, Villasco Catera, Bilosa, Vergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Raza Suárez, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biulago, Yap Arthur, Yap Milacio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samore Maria Carmen, Samore Ronaldo, Sarate, Subiri.
With one hundred seventy-six members voting in affirmative, zero voting against and zero in abstention, House Bill Number 7363 is approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Secretariat be directed to immediately transmit to the Senate copies of the recently approved bills on third reading. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretariat is hereby directed to transmit to the Senate the bills read on third reading, approved on third reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, there may no more matters for the day. I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow, May sixteen, at four o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is adjourned until...